Hey, can you hear this okay Commissioner Gardner?
Yep, I can.
Excellent. We will call the order of this commission meeting on October 29th at 2:16 PM. We like to start our meeting with a prayer reading or thought and the pledge of allegiance. Rich Pyatt's gonna give us the prayer. Just kidding, Rich. The prayer actually be, the prayer is actually gonna be Sherry Erickson. Camera get your face? Just curious.
Oh, Rich, that was bad.
Opportunity to roast you a little bit in your last few days. Let the minutes reflect that Sherry Erickson will give us the prayer and Rich Pyatt will lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Our dear God, my Father, we are grateful to be able to meet together and we're thankful for this county that we live in. We're thankful for our commissioners and those that work with them and their hard work on our behalf. We ask thee to be with us during this meeting that we will be able to discuss those things that are pertinent and that all will go well in this meeting. Again, we thank thee for all that thou wrestes us with and we say this things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sherry.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, we're excited to hear from our Miss Utah County giving us a presentation on your service program platform. So yeah, thanks for being with us.
Yes, thank you for having me here. I wanted to start off just introducing myself a little bit. So I grew up in Benjamin, Utah on a farm. So we had horses, cows, chickens, and two Great Danes that kind of qualify as miniature horses. And I also grew up swimming in the irrigation ditches. So I'm not afraid of getting my hands dirty or a little hard work. I'm currently a student at Utah Valley University. I study ballet and I'm so fortunate to be a part of this program that helps me with scholarship funding so I can continue my education. I'm very passionate about service work. When I was nineteen, I moved to the Dominican Republic and taught English at a school in Porto Plata. And then I loved it so much, I had to do another trip. So when I was twenty, I led a humanitarian group to Romania where we took care of kids in an orphanage system there and I absolutely loved it. So I want to introduce my community service initiative, which is called Autism Awareness to Acceptance. So autism is a spectrum. No two people experience it the same way. And so it could be a sensitivity to light, to touch, to sounds, or it could be a different way to communicate. And each have amazing talents and skills and perspectives that could really enrich our communities if we allow them to and if we give them the space to. And so my goal is to help create communities that give them that space. And so a big reason why so my community service initiative is because while I was in Romania, I was taking care of a little girl who was on the spectrum and she was extremely active. So I'd take her to the playground a lot. And while we were there, she wanted to play with her neighbors. But her neighbors didn't really know how. And so a lot of times she ended up being, felt like she was left out. And that really inspired me to help educate and bring awareness and acceptance to our autism community. And also because I have family that is on the spectrum and cousins. And so I was given a front row seat to watching them grow up and how that affected them and how this acceptance is very much needed. So I have three focuses. One is encouraging empathy within schools. Something I'm very inspired by is the Kids on the Move. They have these things called the Buddy benches, which I would love to see more within Utah County. Where kids that are feeling left out, they can go sit on these benches and other kids can see them and include them. And so it's for kids that have a harder time reaching out and asking to be included. My second focus is raising awareness and amplifying voices. And so using voices of people with autism to talk about their experiences. So I wanted to plug in my Instagram really quick. It's at MissUtahCounty UT. And so please follow along and you'll be able to watch some of those. And the third is by modeling inclusion and bringing more sensory friendly spaces and events. And I would love to put on a sensory friendly Santa for this Christmas. I feel like that would be very exciting. I wanted to end this talking about how I love being a part of the Utah County Fair. I wanted to thank Craig Conno for all his hard work and for allowing me to be a part of it. And I got to bring my niece to it and my Utah honeybee, Welly, and they absolutely loved it. So I want to thank you guys for that. And I'm really excited and eager to serve and I want to help wherever needed. And so if you guys need me, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. You represent us well. I'm curious if you have some friends in Dominican Republic that you've been in contact with the last few days with this hurricane?
Oh, I think that's in Jamaica.
Oh, it's in the Dominican Republic.
I need to look into that. Is that scary?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope they're okay.
We are big fans of your work with the autistic kids. As you know, we put on that golf tournament that you were helping us with, you know, being at. And we think our number is around fifty thousand that we'll be able to give to the preschool and let those kids be able to go on field trips and do things that they otherwise wouldn't be able to. So the ripple effects of your efforts are going very, very far. So thank you for representing us well. Anything from you two?
Amazing. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Sherry.
As an autism mom myself, I've got a couple of kids on the spectrum and the work you're doing is great. Just like every other kid, they want to have friends and they want to play too. And the more awareness I think we bring, the better off that I think our whole society is. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Hope. Thanks, Sherry. Appreciate you guys. Okay, we'll build our consent agenda. Are there any of the nine consent agenda items that either commissioner would like to hold?
I didn't have any.
Number nine.
Number nine. Okay. And then on the regular agenda, looks like we've got just the sixteen items. No, want to continue item fifteen to the next commission meeting?
Uh, one and two. Fourteen. Eighteen.
I have no additional.
Okay. And then as far as closed, we're gonna hold twenty and strike twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Is that true? Richard, you're good? Okay. Excellent.
Okay, on the consent agenda, we will hold number nine. On our regular agenda, we will continue to our next meeting November twelfth, uh, which will be number fifteen. We will hold number one, number two, number fourteen, and number eighteen. As far as closed, we will hold number twenty, strike twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Oh, and I see on seventeen, the cheese here will acknowledge adding some staff to Vineyard. So I'd love to see that. This is their second ad for the year. So good job, um, in Vineyard.
Okay, item nine.
Um, I just want, uh, just to double check, we're just adding service, no cost?
That's correct. Yeah, they're providing this additional service free of charge. This allows to have, uh, physical kind of surveys in location onsite at the county uh, as part of our included term of our existing contract.
Hey, perfect. A motion to approve item number nine.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that passes.
Um, on this one, I just want to hear from the assessor's office. I saw the argument for the, uh, you know, the appeal or, um, so, but not really your side if I could get that.
Commissioners, before you do that, we might just check to make sure the property owner taxpayer is present. Is that the case?
Is this number one?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, yes, I would accept the taxpayer.
Okay. And you want to give them a chance to speak as well?
Perfect. Um, that's up to the chair.
Let's have, let's have, yeah. The, uh, what do I say applicant, owner? Appellant. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Dan Heaton. I'm general counsel for the ACE group of companies. The issue is actually fairly simple. There was an audit in 2024. There were approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of assets that were disposed of in twenty eighteen. But they erroneously appeared on the depreciation schedule for the company. So they've been fully depreciated. So there was no effect as far as income tax goes, but they did appear on the schedule. So they were caught up in the audit. We chose not to challenge it, but this year we removed those assets. They were primarily cryptocurrency mining hardware servers. They were disposed of in twenty eighteen. Those, I don't know if you're aware of, you know, just how quickly those types of assets become obsolete. But they were obsolete in twenty eighteen. They were disposed of. So they were removed this year. And we received a notice that we needed to prove that they were picked up in the audit and we needed to prove that they had been disposed of. Well, this was back in twenty eighteen when we got rid of those assets. So and the only reason that we're here today is because of a prior year's audit that those assets were were picked up under that audit. But this is a new year and you know, if, if, uh, the assessor our position is if they want to audit and do another walkthrough of the premises, which they did, and those assets were not discovered in twenty twenty-four. But they were on the depreciation schedule. So it's as simple as that. We, we pay a lot of money in taxes, uh, but we my time honestly, in the time of the owner, it's probably not worth as, I mean, it's probably worth more than the amount of issue here, but this will continue to happen every year. Because they'll be removed next year again. The assets do not exist. They haven't existed since twenty eighteen. That's just the one account. There's two other accounts, very simple, but the, these companies were closed in twenty twenty-four. Rose Maravo, the, I think I'm pronouncing her name correctly, was the auditor in twenty twenty-four and for the, uh, the company. Uh, let's see, which number was that? Eight five one eight oh, I believe, for Ace Management. Actually, excuse me, that, that company was closed in twenty twenty-four. We liquidated all the assets. Yet for some reason, the assessor wants to tax assets for a company that doesn't exist. It, I don't know if it was formally closed in terms of articles of dissolution in twenty twenty-four. But the company ceased doing business and the assets were liquidated in twenty twenty-four. And they are trying to assess, um, a, a small amount on that as well. But the assets simply do not exist. We, we got rid of them. And, and then I mentioned Rose, the, uh, the, uh, auditor for twenty twenty-four acknowledged that certain other assets, um, for our Orem location, um, of ACE data centers were transferred to the Provo location. And I even attached an exhibit that shows where Rose transferred those from Orem to Provo. Yet now they want to tax them under Orem, which closed last year. So, you know, this is really, it, it just comes down to burden, I think. And I don't know that we have to prove that assets don't exist. When the day, when we reported that, um, they do not. Uh, I mean, there's procedures. If, if they want to perform another audit, that, that's the procedure. But to prove a negative, prove that we threw away hardware in twenty eighteen, I mean, that's an impossibility. I don't know how we can prove that. We didn't realize that would be an issue then. Could have taken video, but we didn't. But those assets simply do not exist and, um, I mean, I, frankly, it's a travesty of justice to, to pay taxes on assets that, that do not exist. The assessor can go back five years if they discover that this is not true. There's a, um, you know, there's essentially a hundred percent penalty if anybody willfully hides assets. So you have five years to make that discovery. Um, but, uh, you know, so there is a remedy, but I don't think the remedy is to assess that tax now. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. If you'll stay close in case, yeah, there you go. Uh, we'll have maybe another question or two for you.
So Bert Garfield, Utah County Assessor, and I have Paulette Stetzer up here. It's a personal property supervisor. She, I'll let her start. Is that okay? And I'll fill in a little bit, so.
Okay, um, Paulette Stetzer, as Bert said, um, as stated, yes, the filings were received for those items as well as the audit that was conducted for twenty twenty-four. In regards to those items that were still on the filing and not removed to the correct account, we left them there because it's not common practice for the auditor to move items from one location to another. That is up to the taxpayer. And if that is what documentation is provided to the auditor when the audit is conducted, that is how they proceed with that. So unfortunately, we can't just move equipment. It is up to the taxpayer to the, update the accounts accordingly. The one account that was, uh, closed, we did close, and I believe that is the eight five one eight oh. So there are no taxes out on that account. The other account that he's referencing, that equipment was not moved from point A to point B. So in order to adequately assess tax, it needs to be removed over to there was also a filing received where they deleted their newer equipment and put in much older servers and such. So we, we, we did question that and that is common practice for our office to question. And we do have that capability of doing so. So, um, which is why the taxes have been assessed to that location. So.
So just to reinforce the fact that due to some unanswered questions, we issued an audit, requested an audit. The Utah State Tax Commission does the audits, not our office that does the audit. And there, this is based upon the audit of the State Tax Commission. Any other questions?
Commissioner Gardner, do you have any questions?
Um, I was wondering about the, the claim on the, on the disposal for the equipment. How, how would somebody prove that they disposed of equipment? And, and I hope by disposing, he meant that they recycled it, not just threw away all of that computer equipment into our landfill.
That I can't answer as to how he disposes, Commissioner. What I can say-
I know, but my question for you is how do they prove that they disposed of it?
They would remove it from, the, the interesting, uh, part of this is that they removed newer equipment to replace it with older servers. So would that not cause a little bit of a, a question in your mind as to why would you get rid of the newer and keep the older? It, again?
But the audit is what they have now.
Well, I mean, I actually understand how cryptocurrency mining works. So, no, I mean, I understand that's gonna go out and it, it doesn't matter how old your video card is, you're gonna go with the one with the highest computational power. So maybe we could have somebody do an audit to understand the industries they're auditing. But if you want to ask me more questions on that, we can. But my question was just how do they permit?
They would just remove it from their list. But in the one filing, it was stated they was moved from one location to another, but it wasn't reported on that other filing, which is why we questioned it.
Gotcha. Okay. So that was the problem is that they reported they had moved it, but they hadn't rather than disposed of. Okay. Thank you.
And so Bert, for you, there, the current outstanding tax is only on property that was included in the twenty twenty-four audit.
Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
No.
That is correct. We left the equipment on the, the filings and they were notified that the equipment would be left as per the audit was reported to our office.
And that was completed by the taxpayers association with obviously the help of?
About the taxpayers association, the Utah State Tax Commission.
Excuse me, tax commission. Thank you. And, uh, okay.
So we do several audits a year. So this is not unusual to do an audit. So properties where we can't get a good handle on what they have, we have in our budget to pay for the state to do an audit. And that's where this came from. So we're just going off with that audit where they physically walk through the building. We also have a supporting documentation of their advertisements of what they have in their building. And that's what's supporting the audit. So it seems like the audit was pretty accurate.
Dan, give you a couple more minutes.
I think we're conflating some of the issues here. There are three different accounts. In terms of, and honestly, we're talking about less than two hundred dollars in taxes for two of them. I understand the point that it's the taxpayer's obligation to transfer assets from one location to another. I get that. And that would be, uh, nine eight zero, excuse me, nine eight one oh four, nine eight zero two nine. And I, I need to make clear that the audit was for two thousand and four, the assets that we held on January first, two thousand and four.
Excuse me.
Two thousand and twenty-four.
I thought that's what you-
The assets that were held on January first of that year. We're not talking about the audit year. We're talking about twenty twenty-five, the assets that we held on January first, twenty twenty-five. So and we're not under audit. As far as I know, we're not under audit for twenty twenty-five. So we removed the assets from our depreciation schedule. We, we, we clarified and made it, made sure everything was correct. And as stated, we follow the procedure to remove those assets from our list. Yet somehow we find ourselves back in this audit without the proper notices, without procedures. Are we under audit? Or are we not?
Sounds like I'm understanding the audit's complete.
The, the audit was complete last year.
So you're not under audit.
Right. So it comes down to, um, the assessor claiming that, uh, we, for some reason, we're not allowed to remove those assets from the list. We've removed them to reflect reality. And that's the, uh, and we're talking about, uh, we'll give you the number here. So twenty-seven hundred dollars in tax, um, two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in value, um, was removed. We have assets coming and going all the time, right? And, and by the way, we're paying far more than that in taxes this year on that, on that account. Let's see, I, I don't have the exact number, but and this is three companies. I don't want to open ourselves up to audit for all, but we have numerous companies. There's three at issue here. So, I mean, that's, I, I guess I'd like an answer to some of those questions. Why are, why are we being challenged for removing assets from our asset list when we're not under audit? And when we simply chose not to challenge it last year? Are we gonna be here again next year? I hope not. It's just, it's, it's an injustice for us to pay taxes on assets that we simply don't own. And so I don't want to conflate the different issues. We're, we're talking, that's, that's one of the, one of the accounts that, that matters the most here. And that's the ACE data centers, um, in Provo location. And that's the one that I think we primarily need to resolve. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, Katrina? Options here.
Um, so this is evaluation appeal. It's, uh, personal property is weird. It does, it should go in front of the BOE in my opinion, but the, so, but the statute says it should go in front of the county legislative body. So I think your options are, um, essentially what they would be if you were acting as the BOE for evaluation appeal. And I'm sure Paul can give us a little bit more insight on our different avenues are.
Yeah, your avenues are to grant the appeal and go with, uh, did you, did the taxpayer suggest a value here? Do we have, do we have that before the commissioners? Or you must have put that in some appeal document, right?
In their appeal document, they, they listed out the amount they believe was incorrect.
That they want to reduce it by. So yeah, just, uh, your choice to either grant the appeal, deny the appeal, uh, either way, taxpayer and the assessor would each have a chance to appeal this decision to the tax commission. So.
And Bert, one more question. Will this be resolved in the future? Like, has, has their property been removed? So this is not an issue ongoing? And this would be essentially a true act in my opinion. And then moving forward, those assets have been removed?
Well, I'm not sure if we have all the details about removals, but I'm just saying that we have a list of equipment. We depreciate them. That's what personal property is based off of.
But if they give you the proper notification of removal, then you will remove it.
Yeah, I mean, but there's been some, what's the word? Confusion about this? I think the only way I know for sure is do another audit and that we know for sure what they have.
And to Amelia's point, if you recycled it, you would have proof that it was removed, right? Is that, is that the process?
Maybe somebody, but it was, I mean, they recycled it in twenty eighteen. That's like seven years ago. They may, they may not have that proof anymore.
But anything we run through household hazardous waste goes through, we contract with a carrier that recycles that product.
Not necessarily. And I, I hate to say it, but I think some of those assets might not have been recycled.
Okay.
But there was a walkthrough. Under the audit, the auditor walked through the location in Provo, did not find those assets. The only reason they were assessed in twenty twenty-four is because they were on the depreciation schedule. And I've looked at the audit procedures and guidelines and I see why they did that. You know, that's one of the things auditors are supposed to look for. Compare the depreciation schedule, you know, to the tax filing and I get that. So, um, it was erroneous. They were fully depreciated. So it didn't affect our income tax filings at all. But when, but it allowed us to, we realized the mistake because of the audit. And there was a walkthrough. I mean, if they want to walk through again and frankly waste the time that's, it's already been done. It was done in connection with the audit. But they can see that those assets don't exist. So, and, and, and by the way, section fifty-nine to thirteen twenty-one, Utah code clearly states that the legislative body upon sufficient evidence being produced that property has been either erroneously or illegalist illegally assessed may order the county treasurer to allow the taxes on that part of the property erroneously or illegally assessed to be deducted before payment of taxes. So it's clearly written in the statute that this body has the authority to make this decision. Thank you.
I'm inclined to approve the appeal because even though they were on a tax schedule, if the audit walkthrough showed that the equipment wasn't there, the only reason they got a fine awarded was because they were on the depreciation schedule. Which if that didn't affect the income tax at all, then it's like a non-substantial finding on a tax audit, then I think if the walkthrough didn't find them, then personal, even if the walk, if the walkthrough didn't find them, but even if they were on the depreciation schedule, a personal property audit still showed that they didn't have the equipment. If it had substantially affected their property tax, I mean, their, uh, income tax because of, uh, they were depreciating any value, that would be the tax commission that would find an error there, not us. We are only dealing not with the income tax portion. We're only dealing with the property tax portion. And if there is a state audit that they walked through and didn't physically see the equipment, that's proof that the equipment's not there. I'm, I'm inclined to approve the appeal.
Is that why you held it? Are you leaning one way or the other?
I didn't hold it.
Sorry, I'm talking, Skylar.
Yeah, does Bert challenge that these assets were visualized or not?
Well, I'm gonna have Paulette.
Because I do, I do lean towards Commissioner Gardner's. I don't, I, I think it's
Answer this question.
Rather ridiculous. If we didn't, if these were not visualized at the, and this is more of a clerical error that is being fixed. Like, is that why I'm at?
That is not my understanding, Commissioner. It is my understanding if they are writing it off on their federal depreciation schedule, they still have that item. So which brings me back to the point where we discussed newer server equipment being deleted and replacing it with older equipment. So I don't know. I was not there. And none of my staff was there for the physical walkthrough. So we can't say what Rose saw when she went through.
But Rose is claiming she saw them.
It was there. I'm-
She's claiming on what she saw.
Cool. So again, she's not here to represent what took place during that physical, uh, site visit. So I can't say yes or no to that. But I would think, in my opinion-
Well, you just claimed that she didn't see them and then you claimed that you also claimed that you replaced older equipment with newer equipment.
No, the taxpayer.
Newer equipment or did she see the older?
I mean, those are two different things.
It's the taxpayer that removed the newer equipment and put in the new, the older equipment. It's the taxpayer that removed the newer equipment and put in the new, the older equipment on the filing, which is what brought this question to mind. So with that said, she uses whatever evidence is presented to her when they go out to do an audit. And if it's there, it goes on the, it goes on the the uh filing, the the uh completed audit. So again.
Well, did she put it on the finding because it was there or because it was on?
I can't confirm yet.
Because you're saying she said it was there, but then there's, but then you're saying that it's because it was on the depreciation schedule. I wanna know where the equipment physically was and if she saw, or if she just did it based off of the depreciation schedule.
That I cannot confirm, but I would think it's common practice. If it is on their federal depreciation schedule, it goes on the audit. That is common practice.
And I can confirm under O.
Right, that's a finding, but it's not a substantive finding. That's my point. The difference between an audit finding and a substantive finding are different.
Uh, I can confirm, cuz I was involved.
We get findings all the time when we do things in an audit, but it's whether or not it's substantive that I really care about.
Right. Um, it was picked up because it was on the depreciation schedule. And just to correct, uh, they were, they're different um depreciation schedules depending on the type of asset, and the fact that it showed up on this schedule didn't mean that we still had the asset. I I'm not sure. I I just heard uh her mention that. They're they're on this, they're on the schedule until we remove them. So they can be depreciated down to zero, which happened in this case, so it had no more effect on our taxes, but they were still on the schedule. So there really is no um I don't think that's proof that we, just because something was on the schedule that that we own the asset, and and I can confirm, but that's the only reason that they were picked up in the audit.
Thanks, Dan. Um I guess either way, to Katrina's point, either party can appeal your decision. This is unique. We don't we don't normally do this. If we did, we would spend a lot more afternoons of Wednesdays, you know, discussing these, but.
Yeah, so I'll I'll let Commissioner Gardner make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the appeal.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve item number one appeal. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Simmons. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Item two.
Um, just really quick for Tom, reading through this, very little change, correct? Like I didn't see much substantive change.
Um, from this, from the accident review board to this.
Yes.
There's some change.
Will you just quickly hit them?
Yeah, so the accident review board, as it was before, was primarily tasked with reviewing incidents and claims and then looking at the root cause. The risk committee expands that and gives us the ability to look at in insurance, any kind of more strategic risk kind of issues, with also the authority to create safety committees within the departments to look at the incidents, accidents, and any other safety issues.
All in an advisory capacity.
In an advisory capacity.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And to his point, as I was looking over the agenda, it's usually helpful in the future if it's re, if we've got a red line version.
Okay.
Right? So.
Commissioner, yes, we usually do include a red line version. On this one, you basically strike out the entire existing. And so because it was all struck out, with the exception of a couple sentences here and there, I included the old version and the new version.
I got.
This kind of, this unique case.
Okay.
A motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Fourteen.
I got fourteen. I just wanted to um highlight some of the good work there at the Utah Lake Authority. Um, this is two years of marketing dollars um for them. Um I didn't really care much about the lake before this job, and I don't think many people do, and that's what we're working on fixing. It's a a very significant part of the county. Um, I see lots of potential. I'm not sure I'll be around when it gets there, but um there's endless potential for recreation and economic um capabilities of the lake ecologically, um a lot of stuff. Uh, Luke and Sam do a great job there. Um, and so I just wanted to to highlight that. Um, they've had some campaigns. Um, and uh, like I said, this is two years of marketing dollars, and I know it will go to good use, and I think we're making progress there. If we can remove the cart, then we will solve all our problems. So uh, if you know how to remove cart, let us know. Uh, millions of pounds of cart, by the way. But uh, I know Luke and Sam are are up to the task, so with that, I will motion to approve item fourteen.
Second thought.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes. Thank you. Okay, and then uh our lease with uh Community Action for the red building.
Yeah, that was me too. Um, great work there. I went through that and all of my least concerns were hit, and I love that. Um, so great job to whoever uh did that. I'm sure you played a part in that.
It was Katrina mostly.
Gordon, Katrina.
You know, all the credit.
It was, I read it and it was not uh like just a standard document. It really worked for us, what we're doing. It was very localized, and I greatly appreciated that cuz I was worried when I saw it that it would be too too, you know, fill in the blank, that it didn't apply, and it very much applies. So um, great work to Katrina, Commissioner Gordon there. Um, and to Community Action, a very good partner of ours, that's coming up here in two weeks, or we'll start the warming center. It was a very interesting time for us and many stories, but um, good work on that.
Maybe an opportunity to give a shameless plug that they are welcoming all donations of food with at Community Action and as well as all of our local pantries, right?
Yeah.
We've talked.
And volunteer at the warming center that's open, so please go to Community Action's website to volunteer there. Uh, very good volunteers until mm Christmas time. Uh, we're far ahead of last year, so that's great, but if you can give time in January, February, there are many openings, so um shameless plug for that as well. And with that, I'll motion to approve item number eighteen.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission?
I'm a point of personal privilege, if I may. Um, as you mentioned, the the food banks uh with the government shutdown, food stamps expires on Friday, um, which is going to bring significant challenges to the community. Uh, we anticipate nineteen thousand Utah County residents uh will have zero dollars on their card come Saturday, so um, please, if you have uh money or food or time to donate to the food bank or Community Action, tab it this way. Um, please do so. Um, because it's gonna get really real here um in a week. And uh, I'm very confident that this community uh will be well prepared to handle that challenge um far more than other places. Um, so that's a testament to the community that we have here.
Thank you. Okay, we will go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dan.